...town Robbinsville. We have received a lot of hesitation and a lot of differing opinion. And let me say that I would like to make a motion that we take this to the table.
I may be heard, as opposed to tallying it, just continue the public hearing till the next board meeting. I recommend my recommendation and maybe get some people to come.
We did have it advertised in the Grand Store, right Kevin?
Yes ma'am, it was in there two weeks.
And perhaps get some people to...
And we are live streaming it now, so it's out there. I know by the way, I have a story on it too.
Especially since it's not 24/7. I think that's what I'm looking for, it's not 24/7. It has time.
10 to 7, I think is what you're saying, no over that.
Make a motion to... I just want to add the American Civil Liberties Union has six county leaders. Violence, potential constitutional violations. Or needs to take into consideration. And a similar case for Boise Idaho. There's similar warrants cost the city over $854,000. Plus they invested over a million dollars in the mental health system. And then take that into consideration.
I think we both took everything into consideration. We're having to weigh out all the different aspects of it. And the citizens of Robbinsville voted us in. And when they share their concerns with us, we also have to take that into consideration. And when you have young mothers expressing their concerns because they can't walk their kids on the sidewalk because they're afraid that they're going to pick needles at one in different areas. You have to address it. You have to work out some kind of a ordinance to where that our citizens feel like they can walk the sidewalks or even sit down on the park benches. And then we have to... It's an area that we have to look at both sides of it. But we also have to consider everyone. We can't just look at one side of it. And I'm not saying that we're not looking at both sides of it. But we have to take and work with the citizens that voted us in and take what they say.
I'd like an opportunity to do this letter and put this cases, I mean first of all, talks about the constitutional day because of no notice. There will be notice.
There will be a notice, right?
There will be notice, so I mean first of all, that's just first fair, if I just pick up from that. There will be notice. We have to give notice for this kind of ordinance. And we have our own which are on court case cases and trying to regulate penalties. And we have to let you call. But for me, whatever you decide, for me, I'd like an opportunity to look at review this letter and the cases you're talking about. To know there's some worth going on here, but I know they're called.
Maybe we can stay in the paper a couple more weeks, you know? Let everybody know of our next meeting, the public comments and similarities.
You're not required to publish again, but it would be nice, you can continue without publishing again. So if you want to publish, you're not required to, you just continue here. And maybe some good bits on this.
Make a motion we continue to look here until the next meeting.
I know it's a hard time for a lot of people for them to come to this meeting here in the day. So...
Schedule for a better time.
An evening time is what everyone is telling me.
And probably a different location too. And probably a different location too, because ain't everybody gonna fit in this little bit room? So yeah, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, I think maybe you need to... What about you Ellen?
The next regular meeting is then. Would you do it that evening?
I would prefer to have the evening done before that, in that way we have, you know, an idea of what we...
May 3rd would be the next regular.
What's it?
What if we do, one of those evenings in here, don't do it Friday?
Don't do it Friday.
Unless the Friday's there for you.
I might say I'll make it happen.
But then...
Against Friday, I'll...
27. 5:30.
We have a special call here to take comment.
So you have a motion to...
Continue it too, people.
27 to 5:30.
For a special call here.
I see.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion closed.
Make a motion to postpone the hearing.
To ring on board with ordinance.
I'll say it.
Just want to add maybe handout copies. I said in the letter, we'd be long for a couple copies. If something handed out, I'll be reading.
Alright, next up is the approval of the meeting for the special meeting March 8th.
Make a motion to approve the special meeting for special meeting March the 8th.
I'll say it. All in favor? You vote. Okay, next up, your agenda. We will to public comment. We invite the public comment.
John?
Okay, go ahead John.
As I said, I came up Monday, but I'm going to attend it. There's a few points of things that I want to bring up with Rev. Up, Carolina Rev. Up. The first thing that I want to talk about is that I attended the Main Street Conference. Now, when we started Rev. Up, it was our intention, we had a hometown strong meeting here from the government back in four years ago. And one of the things that we talked about was becoming an associate community for Main Street North Carolina. And they have over 80 cities in the state. They're way ahead of the curve with revitalization and getting businesses into back to their downtowns and whatnot. That was one of our main objectives with Rev. Up. I attended their conference. One of the things that I came away from the conference with, and even though we were not approved as a downtown associate community, they have offered to work with us and we've gone to their conferences a couple times. So one of the things that I came away with is that all of these Main Street communities have organizations or committees or whatever that focus on bringing in new businesses. We've had that comment from Grand County Travel and Tourism that we should concentrate more on that. We started the Aruba program, which you all are members of. So one of the things that we're going to focus on is putting together a committee that just focuses on business development. So that's one thing that I wanted to bring to your attention that we took away from the Main Street Conference. And it's one of the reasons why we go, because they always have a lot of good ideas. I mean, they had a lot of other good ideas too, but... Another thing that I can tell you is that we can, we're hoping to have our planning retreat towards the end of the month, around Thursday, but right now it depends, I've got two possible speakers. So one of the things that we can do to help out, we can notify all the Aruba and Rev. Up members about your special hearing and maybe we can get some more folks to come in next time it's on that and make, help you make a decision. That's on, okay. Okay, yeah, I've got that meeting kind of notified. And if you do have a copy of the ordinance, I can make copies and distribute that to the members. We have, I've gotten back the draft and the papers for the encroachment agreement for a wayfinding sign. We started putting those up over a year ago. And I finally got it back, but we have, there's two problems on it. Number one, the town and Ray, Ray gave us money and we're going to apply leftover funds towards some banners for Main Street. And then they asked us and we agreed to put in another sign on the corner of Knight Street pointing to the county offices and recreation center and library. So we think that's an important sign. When I got this approval back, there were two problems with the encroachment agreement. Number one is that they did not include that location. Number two is, they said that there were no sidewalks at the location at Freeman Gas, where June Luster comes into Snowburg. So, you know, I went by and looked and the sidewalk does go right up there to that sign. But what's happened is, I think at one time there was about the last 20 feet of sidewalk was removed to put some ballots in or something like that and it's never been replaced. I would, what I'd like to do is get the town to approve giving me a letter saying that we would like the sign, because they're asking us not to put that sign in. We've already got it, we've already got it there because they, like I said, we're under the impression that everything was good. I think what I'd like to do is to have the town give us a letter that agrees that the location at Knight Street should have a wayfinding sign. And I'll also get one from Michelle Ray because they funded the project. And also that we would like to still put the sign up at Freeman's Gas because the sidewalk does go right up to it. And the only thing that they make, you know, it seems like it's such a problem because this is not a law for these wayfinding signs. It's just their policy. And it seems like they're being very heavy-handed with this, but whatever, whatever it is, you know, we need to take care of it, we need to work with DOT. And I'm not saying anything about that, but... And if they say anything about that last 20 feet, I know that at one time the town was repairing sidewalks, replacing sidewalks, it wouldn't be a big deal to put in another 20 feet.
I tried to get that done last year and Oldwood Bryan Johnson stayed, there was a water line that went hungry.
Oh really? Those are water lines, aren't they like two feet deep or something?
Well, see, it's one of those areas where we're going to have to redo it. So we felt like it was unnecessary to spend that much money on the sidewalk and then have to tear it up because we would have to be a good place to do water lines.
Okay, well, could we, could we just say that we were, that last, if that comes up, if it comes up, could we just say that we're going to have the sidewalk there but with pea gravel or something like that? So that it doesn't have to be, if repairs are needed, that wouldn't create a problem? Would that be a good alternative?
Could we just leave it as it is instead?
Well, we can, yeah, we can try that, but if he says anything, you know, maybe we can use that as an alternative. But we don't have to put that in the letter. I'll take it. I'm going to have a meeting with him and there's another fellow down there with Andy and there's another fellow that's in charge of the encroachment agreements. And so once, I want to take a letter from you and from Ray and from Rev. Up saying that those are the things that we would like to change the encroachment agreement to. And I'll have that meeting and hopefully if they're agreeable, then we can come back and we can all sign it at the next meeting and finish that up so that it's not coming down. So that was one thing. Another thing that I wanted to check on, oh, we are going to try to do our planning retreat this month. Right now it depends, we've got two possible speakers or facilitator. So if the town has any suggestions for us, for Rev. Up to work on or Aruba, you know, if you can get anything that you'd like us to concentrate on or work towards or better ways that we can work with you, I'll take that to the planning retreat. So if there's, you know, and I can check back in with you before, once I get the final data on the planning retreat. And so anybody, any of y'all that wants to make suggestions to us, I'll take that to the planning retreat. I wanted to, there's two things, I know you've got the town hall appraisal on the agenda here. Kenny is supposed to be coming to the meeting, his wife has been, you know, his wife has dementia and she's been moved into a care home. That's tied up a lot of this time, but it's been about six months, so hopefully we can get some kind of a resolution on that for him. He said he was going to try to be here, so I don't know how to say it. And the, one of the things that I was wondering about is what's the update on the retaining laws down there?
They're not sorting anything.
I had heard that they were supposed to start in April.
Possibly.
Okay.
If I find anything, I'll let you know.
Okay, okay. It'd be, it'd be good to take that to our planning retreat as well, if we get some kind of update. And that's about all I've got on the agenda.
Thank you John.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Make a motion to close the call.
I'll say it.
And I know this is out of step, but I just remembered something else that we need to amend the agenda. Is it too late for me to do that Ellen?
We can amend the agenda, we have the time, it's what it's approved.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda and please add, looking into getting job bids for painting the power poles, having individuals that is willing to pay for paint, but we just need to get some of the paint.
We really need to open bids in the paper.
We just have them... No, just painting these poles and paint is already paid.
Good faith effort, told everything to the same person.
And that being all right, yeah, you can.
To pay for people who paint it?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know about that, it's a town, it's a whole, so...
You're talking about the power, you're talking about the power.
Whatever you just do, you don't... We just... Do I make the motion to amend the agenda?
I'm putting out as number nine. Alright, next up, we can move on to Obis. That will be the town hall courage. I set up an appointment, I took the gentleman inside the hometown hall. And it was previously appraised at $78,500. And you decreased it to $34,000 and $630. Have we had any more bids on the ballot?
You wouldn't, you hadn't heard of this yet.
Yeah, so now we simply have this true appraisal.
But we need a resolution to go. I can do that. Can you help me with that, I can pull a file. And one of the things in a resolution, we all need to decide. You're going to do, there's about five ways to do it. Are you going to take...
Not either society, but...
Well, I mean, so...
You're going to draw the jury?
No, well, it's got delay, so I have no idea, I have to get that to resolution. Or if you were going to... You're going to take bids and you're going to open them at a time ceremony?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you can also put an article in the newspaper and say you're taking an offer to purchase. You never give a person's name, although it has to have ten, ten days. Auctions, then you can auction, we have an auction up here in the town hall in the highest bid. You've got to decide if this ceremony or 21. And if you take offers to purchase... And that's what, and I'm sorry, I know there's one that came in, but we hadn't done it, hadn't decided. But you have to decide if you're not going to take a bid like on the hand, you need to decide whether you're going to... You don't have to, but the decisions you have to put in the resolution.
Is this one of them for you to tell us that we can have a public hearing on yet to or not?
No, as long as it's all out. Put every way you decide to do it, so you have permission. But I think you need to have the reservation, the specificity, so no one comes in and chooses you.
So we pretty much...
I sent an email, we all saw this, and I know because you've had this waiting a long time. So, and I put about five or six things in that email. And that's, if you decide that today, I'll have the resolution ready. In fact, for your special call meeting on the 27th, as long as you have it on the agenda, you can go ahead and sign in on the resolution. But if you're going to take bids, you have to put that in the newspaper. If you're taking bids too, next day. So do you want to take bids? You want a certain minimum? Do you want to do a public auction? Do you want to take offers to purchase? And I can give you one of those up here in town hall, publish it. You don't have to publish, but you can get it out in public. Boys get accused of giving them up. Not doing it. So, you can put in the paper that you're going to take.
I don't know, but you decided to leave it. And we got to set them in, we just take bids, go.
Well, you have to put in the resolution, one. And I'll send that all again and you can fill it in and let me know. You also have to, if there is a set, how you're going to do it, if there's a set bid. You have to say the reasons you're selling. You're selling it, you got to say, it's new one to lead in this town property. It cannot be utilized for town property, possibly perfectly round space. And work, you know, you have to have in the resolution, the specificity of why you're selling.
So you can draw that up.
Yeah, well, what are you, you don't have a minute?
It's been vacant for, gosh, at least 15, 20 years. We felt like maybe someone could purchase that and have a business instead of it just sitting there empty.
It is, it's too small too, it's too small.
It's too small, yeah.
Email repairs. Okay, are you going to set a price? Of course, you always reserve, in any of this, you reserve the buy to accept to...
I want that in.
Yeah, that'll be in.
Taking consideration. For fire.
I think the bids, we need to start the bids placed in June.
Nothing less than 20, but it's... And the reason for that is the amount of repairs. The amount of repairs to the interior of the campus. And are you going to take single bids?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so that will be done. And remember, um...
The way they can set that, seeing a bid or not.
Absolutely, they have to be in a four clock, a day certain, a twenty certain. Remember, we won't get to the papers until next, no, the resolution, you got to adopt a resolution, assuming that's going to be...
So adopting the resolution, we can do that at this special meeting for the public hearing and then...
Okay. And then open bids, open June meeting? More be timed, you get the paper, on the twenty-seventh? April.
Well, we can, can it not be advertised and we can have like a month?
Yeah.
And then.
Open the June meeting?
Yeah, they can have the whole month of May.
It'll be from May to June, it's like, Kevin.
Like, May fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth, and then your next meeting will be that first Wednesday, June.
And June would be.
Can I ask for something?
Twenty-six, yes, excuse me, twenty-seven.
Do yous have to have the building open for people that wanna bid on it to go and inspect it?
I'm saying, I'm sure that they'll call, what do they do?
It's not required, but. Probably. We need to put it in the resolution, it's not gonna be twenty-fourth, twenty-seventh, a time certain, two.
Maybe they can set up appointments with Sean on certain days or something.
So that would be in the resolution. And I'll send that email again. Along with the draft, and we have that for twenty-seven. And that email where this. And you're gonna open. And I think to assure, we don't have to, you don't give anyone's name when you open the bids, you just. Hold the bid, number the bids, according to the person's name, just like seven. Unless you accept.
Then you can tell it, yeah.
And the basis for twenty K is the repairs and interior, that could be moving.
I'm not perfect, many of my. What Chad told me, it's.
It's right.
We were involved with the other folks that were gonna start a business there, that you were negotiating these with. And one of the problems that they had was that. All the faces that they had brought is allowing water to penetrate through, and that's what's damaged the whole place. So that's, that's an extra.
Moving on, any further discussion over there?
Is this, I wanna ask you all, is this a?
It's on the, it's up on the agenda, it's a town bench, it's a event table, so point of thought.
I sent you all just a, remember on the appointment for the law, again. It has to be with specificity, what actually take. Statute for municipalities is that there's no specific rules, process of calling. A town member. What it does require is that you develop a process for. And taking applications. Applying on damage committee to come back, with person to board. So, you all talk about applications, I wrote mine out, this is just a draft. So you have something to slash and rub. But remember, the thing is, is you agree on the process, yes, whatever, you said application, remember the meaning is. Whether you publish in paper, or you publish in a paper, the application is available, that's clear. I'd like to have everything listed. That. Appointments will be scheduled. Maybe you're going to have, set them up for the next quarter, not May, maybe June. But just something, you're gonna agree on the process. How you're gonna interview, time management, maybe, a decision. And how long you're gonna allow applications to come in, again, at four o'clock. On the twenty-eighth, to produce the process.
I do think that we need to do it from, you know, just, I don't know, because we've got the service that different townhood too, and that's a. Thing that we need to make sure you both have time, if you sit there a lot too.
I'm gonna, I heard about the applications for March, and they were due in the, so that we're using.
June, July.
July will. How long is it gonna take applications, so you may.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Rest of April and May?
Yeah, so start taking applications, maybe through what's, it's been, to the last day of May. Four o'clock for the last bid, is that?
The last day in May is Wednesday, the thirty-first.
So four o'clock, Wednesday, thirty-first, May, when the applications. And.
Like thirty-one, at Town Hall, is the last turn, so when we. So, again, this is the application. How many times do you want that run in the newspaper, just once, there's no requirements, just wear the process.
I'm excited, probably I'd run twice, please, that way you get it, so.
I run it once this month, and I run it once next month, so if I should buy it, you still take it, yeah, that's the way I do that.
Okay, so.
Not just back to back, but.
Yeah, spread it out one month each.
So the newspaper, two times. One paper, one night, and one, one at a time. Did you say you wanted it run eighteen times?
Oh. Yes, I did, that's exactly what I said, don't put that on the record.
Okay. And then, all applications in, if I could do one, for the hall. And then appointments, is that what you want, appointments?
Appointments for job interviews.
But do you want them to come in, do you want, do you want them at your June board meeting, and just need an extra hour? Extra time, interview each one? At nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you don't really have lots of room in June, so I really don't wanna throw that into it too.
I would have already did that, so.
Okay, so appointments.
Appointments will be made for interviewing.
Scheduled. Up there?
No, I think me and Kenneth needs to do that, because we're the ones that's gonna be, we need to kinda figure out when our schedule.
Will be scheduled to meet. So, this is, on the application, I, I. I didn't, you wanna mention maybe a resume, or? You wanna know what local boards have done, or? I think not, if you're here, that makes no difference, just civic duty.
I mean, before I, everyone wasn't like to be table, and I never served on any boards.
Or committees? No committees?
Hosted ones.
Yeah.
But, you know, so, to me, that's not really.
All committees, should I, I mean, I meant that to say no committees? Because you might have somebody that has been there.
Yeah, that's good, no. Where is claims, please? Help the two of you, at least that's please.
Yeah.
It's not on here, resume, so.
They can include a resume with this.
Probably should put attached resume.
Yeah, and so please, I, that, yeah. You can still approve this today, as a. Because a lot of people have church committees, I mean. So, okay, and then add. Attached resume. Are you adding the boost of education and work experience?
Yeah, I'm adding, they're applying, you know, for the.
And those, who committees need to have your resume.
And then put in the paper.
I'm like, most, and we need to approve the process of. I don't know, like, see, for all.
I save them for it, of the amended application, with the committees having to.
Right, next up is the Cintas, right? Well, that's a break, a little silly, yeah, and that's how, or, you're talking about arbitration. I don't know, Ellen has some concerns about it. I've sent it back to you.
And one makes it three different contracts, I mean. My response as a municipality is, I mean, you need to get it great. Maybe consider finding, if you all consider finding another service, there's three separate contracts. They're not the same.
So he fixed that, arbitration, and then grand camp, so it does, very well, so. There's only one.
What is the date, there's three separate dates?
Three, four, and a half, and a third.
Okay, and I'm. So. I didn't have the three twenty-nine.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I have one in the back, but I had to see what it had. So he fixed arbitration there.
Twelve, in the bag.
Three, ten, all right. And it was a termination charge, it was pretty hefty. And your contracts. Let me just see the figures.
Number eight is current place.
Okay, what can say? That's not a penalty, no, it's seats. Okay, number eight is good, before it was total, what, it was bouncing, it was just. That's good. You know, even saying they couldn't be done. And they changed it, so. Okay, check number ten. We changed a little bit, you're gonna pay. This is an annual contract. So if you start and have disagreement over quality or, or switch the. Material they use, and it's not suitable for the first. This says you're gonna pay fifty percent of the power, which we put into. And you've got two months left in the contract, you have to switch. You're gonna, yeah, and you're gonna, it's a penalty. It's gonna. You're in this for a year. You're in for a year. But you have hours, you know. Like they said, if they have a price increase, you have a right to reject that and give notice. And you can terminate, you can terminate it for a price increase, so it's just, it's a non-reasonable price increase. But you're gonna turn that around on the ten and pay. You know, I think number changes, they wanna penalty.
You just cut it, you almost rock that, or?
And this, there is the year that we pay up to six.
I mean, you could agree on number ten in one month. You can, you can say no, not at all, I mean, if they change the price, change that. Private performance, not happens. Census is one of the, two dozen companies, I could, I was shocked. So it could be another, all these companies, similar, same service, they're all under number one. I guess they've been bought up. Could be somebody other than Census delivering to you. If you wanna penalty one month invoices, you could say strike ten, or perpetulate and agree to one month. Not for the on-expire term. Just one month in this.
You look at the bill, it's interesting. You were, that is very...
Who's been getting them to change this?
I have, yeah. Ellen found problems with the contract, and I've sent it back to you several times.
Right, yeah, so maybe we can get you...
That's what I'm asking you, you know. I don't think I asked you to change this.
Yeah, I would, and I mean, I'd, I'd be willing to go two months on the penalty, and we just...
Because you're not obviously done with it. You don't have this...
Not this entire term, but...
Could be ten months.
It could be ten months.
Yeah, because up here, they carry, we understand a price increase. Perfect. And then down here, they have this.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to ask him to strike that.
You got it, two months.
Two months, yeah, two months.
Instead of a...
An expired term.
Yeah. I'm sorry, like... Say, I'm assuming, kind of, early do something, and then I, I'll, I have to...
Okay, well, we'll get with that too.
Two months of weekly invoices.
Yes. Yeah, I make most of my table, tables, and just during that, to make schedule, waiting to...
Until I can...
Till we're done with them during.
I save them.
That's awesome, yeah. You want to go ahead and do with that? I think that we can hear.
Yeah, I think Ellen is going to take that, and this sheriff's department, the ordinance and everything. And explain to them that it is there. Everything is, is clear.
Well, I was, I was just in another file where I haven't, I mean, it's your home. Rest of city is no different.
I think what the... What the sheriff is, uh...
You don't...
What, what he's concerned with is that there's not a set. Civil penalty, it goes straight to criminal.
And that's what ordinance is all, they're a violation of criminal, you know, city.
Okay.
So it has to be a...
So it has to be a crime.
A violation is a commission of crime.
Yeah, okay, like, clear that.
Yeah.
I think that's what they're wanting, with probably handling with civilly instead of trying to just... Small, small crimes.
No, in the statute itself, it's, it's chapter fourteen.
What you're saying is, is that they're talented, like fine someone, like a civil penalty.
Yeah, but a civil penalty is actually for criminal.
You can't...
Well, you can have a penalty, but, um... But that's really done under fourteen-four. And it establishes penalty of duty.
Like, I believe they started with this kind of...
My point, you know, my idea is, you know, she's, she put up now, the law is, though. Who is, nobody ever got, uh, same satisfaction still. Be with my... Yeah, citations.
Well, if it's criminal, it's the sheriff's department. It does state that ours, it's criminal.
So does somebody with a panel, like, with me? Have authorization to do the citations, or can that be, tricky, the sheriff?
Here, my warehouse copy. If any person shall violate an ordinance in a county, city, town, I don't know what to do. It's a class-three misdemeanor. It's a fine, if this is current, I thought it was up to six hundred, it's, uh, it says five hundred. So, we cannot make it simple. It's, this is a section for municipalities. And there's always a defense to a violation, and that's listed in there too. So, we can't make it simple.
Okay. Now, I like that with the pledge, you know, I turned that one over, you were charged, and you say it's...
It says not less than one hundred. Right, and then the judge could say five hundred. Because it just says not less than five hundred. And then each day is a continuing violation, and it's going to... So, I mean, we can't do, we want to take this topic through the...
Uh, what is, probably my opinion, you...
She could probably, what they understood. I think.
I love the part of it, the part of it on the alleyway, because I'm really sure no way we can do it. Because it's already getting proper, and we just have the need on the right way, just like everybody else on that other one. The need on the right way on, I don't know what we can do, but assist him on that.
Is that, which one is that one?
The Taylor Street, number five, on Old Business.
Ah.
And I, if they see what's off, well, I like it, but I just don't... Like, when the town gets a little furaway on everybody else...
Do you own that alleyway? I believe it's, doesn't the town own the alleyway?
We own the east one. He owns the property, we own the east.
Y'all didn't reserve an alleyway, and you closed an alleyway? Did you buy a property?
Well, now tacos.
We did that with one area.
But, but the reason behind giving that one up, giving that even up, is that it's been used in over twenty years. And we just let them, yeah, we just, for money, which, uh, right, because there's a property on the road, I guess. But this is an active alleyway.
Is it, what kind of areas is it? I mean, the law forward, they would again issue the citation.
Yeah, it's, uh...
It's in town, so it's, whether it's the alleyway or any of the suburbs or the more...
Yeah, exactly. So, uh, these here, that started the alleyway deal was a motor stop. But there wasn't much they could do about some other stuff, because this was a old Ford, and he had a tag insurance, and it was legal right on... Right on the road, so there wasn't much they could do about it. I think they decided he's always, other than that, I don't think there was, uh, nothing legal to be done with it. Now he's wanting, now he's wanting, uh... They keep saying he wants his property back, and, but he already owns the property, which is just, everybody has a, has a fee on that alleyway. Town, and, you know, at this point, it's been used in the alleyway for, I'm fifty, and, I mean, I'm fifty-three, and it's been an alleyway ever since I've been born. So it's, uh, an alleyway, just...
Grand fellow?
Yeah, I mean, it's just an old roadway, and it's...
Hey, but it's a noise, you mean, there's a noise?
Okay, the noise ordinance is, uh, the neighbor across the road has a dog that barks.
Oh, no, I got you, okay.
That's, that's the dog, that's the, that's the...
But that's, that's, it's too busy for you to just kind of combine any one, one corner. But, I mean, I, I feel more annoyed, but I don't know what we can do about it. I know, because I, I mean, I feel, I feel for him, because I don't live far from him, and I hear a dog barking. And I, I don't want to get in the personal business on that, but kind of tip out on that one.
I think Ellen's going to talk to him after the meeting.
Yeah, I hope you can copy that dog, and it's my woman who's wanted to have.
We'll get you a copy.
Yeah, I'll get it, okay, thank you.
All right. Well, mixed up, it's a little early today. I'm going to take this time to welcome Tasha, she's like a girl, both she's done a really good job. It's, uh, Sonia was turning out to come with a lot of hardship on the jury in their office, and I've been having to do a lot of the finance officer reviews, and Tasha's serving that role, and she's doing awesome job.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. And I love Dr. Ford, I hope she's going to be the finance officer of that.
Part of the update is pulling out the information that I need for some of the ARP reporting, that is the COVID, um, pieces. Regina Mathis has been working with me, she's with the National, uh, North Carolina Legum Municipalities. And she's helping me try to navigate through changing the treasury pieces for I need to log in to pull some of these grant reports, information from Sams.gov. And trying to find some of the policies that I can tie back to the funding for the reporting that's due at the end of the summer. So I was not aware that we have already adopted a couple of these policies. Ellen has said that she's got all of these policies, but we've not, I've not seen...
And they were approved here at board, like, you know.
I don't know what happened. So I've simply pulled the, um, the information Regina has sent over, and... There are two, two of them, and they need to be, I don't know if we have them adopted or not, but that has to be part of being able to tie back, able to pull that information if someone, someone wants to walk in to our office. So I don't know the processes that have gone about these two. And there's a third one that I sent over to Ms. Ellen, and I'm not, not comfortable with that, because I'm not, I'm fine, so... There are quite a board to look over. These two that you have in front of you, the only thing that, the blanket policies, the only thing that was changed in any of them was simply the wording of Towne Robinsonville, and maybe Charlotte, so... That's for a board to look over, but, um, I'm hoping to do, go forward to tie back to some of the numbers. To set forth pieces and parts of the funding and tie those things back. I forgot to have a story. And I apologize that this is last minute, that I did actually receive these pretty much last minute, this last week.
Oh, really, this morning?
Yeah, I've been working on, when you were... I was actually on a webinar this morning regarding this reporting, very information, so, but it is due at the end of this month, on thirty.
Okay, so I'm working on a really good schedule.
About the policies.
I, I spent, we, finance officers, just, I got, say, and she was in a webinar, this was coming through at eleven-eight, this morning. I think what she's discovered is important, I think you were in compliance. With the ARP, because you wouldn't have gotten one, you had to send it again, so you had to send it in. The issue is finding it now. My recommendation is, here's, if you adopt all three, in order to continue with the requirement is for the end of this one, and if you adopt, um, pending, um... And you adopt these policies and review them, and then move again, perhaps now, May, perhaps July, uh, for a re, further review. Generally, we don't adopt something like that. As you look at, plus, I have looked at this one, um... I know we're in compliance, because y'all got the money, and we have to produce the records, but, um... Approve them, and then, in that motion to approve, that the faculty agenda, a further review, um, for July.
I make a motion that we adopt, uh, adopt three policies, and put them up to review on July, maybe, uh... After the further...
I save them, and that just gives her time to make sure she gets it, and turn it over to...
All right, fair enough. I'll be back by the time. All right, okay. Next, um, our auditor is, uh, come on back. I'll turn the phone up behind, and the outlet, because Sonia's trying to issue it.
Is that three, four, one, the... I can't see it, I'm trying to pay up.
It's like, basically, I was going to just change on the date.
You guys speak on this?
Yes.
Yes, please. I, I did, um, retrieve information from these auditors, and we look at the list of what they did. Um, there's a lot of things that were sent over, there are other specific things that I will have to go back and enter into the accounting system itself. Um, one ties back to the RTA accounts, so that they can do bank reconciliation for the system. And there's a whole year that they will not reconcile throughout the accounting system, so... And that's something that the auditors want to see, that's going to be fine, that's involved.
What year was that, was big?
This last year.
This year.
It just wasn't set up in the system for RTAs, so that you can do bank reconciliation. A lot of the CPA terms require that you look at those bases, and that is part of the accounting system, and it's set within the city for our ten fund, nine-five fund, and thirty fund. So it's apparent that fifty fund wasn't in there to have it set up. He was all set that up, I just haven't had time to look through it. But there are other pieces that tie to that. And we're seeing things like that, those are, I have to put back in that. I'm not going to backdate anything, I just have to put it in to that. I just have to put it in to that system.
Did they say how long Tasha had given take?
I've got a lot of pieces that. Your one finance officer that's entered and put into the system. There are other pieces that are missing, you know, that will take time for me to do it over. Because I have to come up with that information, not just for this reporting and the audit, but I need audit pieces for them specific to other pieces of different reporting.
So that, I mean, that's what I was looking at. So it's twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. They just accidentally, the original date, they're supposed to have to be October thirty-first of last year. I might lose please.
Excuse me, that would be in the, that would be in the main.
Yeah, the original.
The original.
Yeah. This is not changing. I fear it is changing on the day. I just wanted to find the date that they, they submitted to what we're going to commission. Basically, that appears.
A second. Did you notice?
Well, I make most please, you know, before you approve the, 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 the contract with the, the lady, the lady one.
Second.
I'll follow further. Next up, Amanda's ninety days probationary period is expired. And I'd have to say Amanda's doing an awesome job too. She's doing a very good job. I can do a little job.
That's tough.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Motion for me to receive her rates of the ninety day probation period.
I'm gonna say. I'll follow further. You know, I have a person who approached me a few weeks ago and they were more, if we could consider putting a fire hydrant in Long Branch, because they said there's no fire hydrant close to where they live. The place the board is okay? No, I'm just going to see if the board would be open to it. If we look at. I would, yeah, I suppose, take them all forward. Okay. Look at possible locations. Yeah, I'm going to sort of make a table after we next, every, they'll just look at for you and make a, make a table, a fire hydrant in Long Branch to the next, next place in the Indian location and labels it by label building. Okay.
Second.
I'll follow further. I'll be right back. Next up, we got Abraham. You got the phone.
Yeah, yeah, it's really quick, so. So right now, just ready rolling right now with Lamar. As you can see, basically, what you're doing in county, you want to bring it here as well. You guys know team, fully advanced, it's kind of like, I mean, infrastructure, you know, it's kind of like, kind of like venture creating. I'll do the legwork, the ID support. Tim and Kevin will do the, but they will do their part, you know, and they will give some of the proposals to you guys. But for me, I just want to show you, I'll do, basically, I will do the ID support, like day to day, which Lamar already have, he, on his part, the water treatment, the water. He paid me sixty dollars per computer, so he paid me a hundred twenty dollars per month. So I want to bring that. I think in this office, you got five computers. So it's like, if you guys add that, so what I do to Lamar, I do the everything backup. I got protection for virus protection around somewhere. And he got, anything needs me, I can do remote or I can go to his water treatments office. So I want to apply that to your five computers here in the office and then two computers for Chad on his location. So, yeah, just, yeah, that's all, all me, that's I can do for your ID support. That's why I said, if you want me, but I want them to come in, Tim, Tim as well and give, because we, I want to bring the best for the town. And, and three of us working here will be, I think, but I think they will get the infrastructure. So I just want to back along with them. And I already talked to Tim and he's okay with it. All right, so he's okay with it for that. But for me, I have a, I have to do like a monthly charge so that I, any, if you guys call me, like monthly, they should call me, but I didn't charge that. And with Southern software, for instance, because I work with Southern software direct for FMS, for accounting software. So it's covered for anything legwork on the grounds, I'll do that type of thing. And so, yeah, so we're looking about five sixty for all years in town.
Is that, was that Amanda?
Amanda, yeah. That's what I said. Out of the five, you see, a hundred twenty, it's been since Wayne, seriously, when Wayne's doing the legwork, the ID infrastructure, Lamar, I've been doing it for Lamar for almost two or three, two and a half years already.
That includes his too? That process?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so, so three hundred, so Lamar's already paying one twenty on his budget and three hundred for this office and Chad's, she got a laptop, she got a laptop from me and then they got two computers and one twenty for that. So five sixty for the whole. So that's ID support, like anything on the legwork. And then when Tim and Kevin come in, we're kind of familiar to each other, so kind of like attached to them and work with them if you guys want. Or, and if you guys looking for a mail system, because I think they're going to provide you guys for a mail system. So we can like hybrid, you know, venture. But if you guys want me to like separate, but I would, I want to be the best. I don't want any competition, want the best, so, yeah, we can venture each other, yeah.
So you're going to work with them on email support too?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I already talked to them, so if you're going to run the commerce or anything, do the wiring, I'll do it for them. So kind of like, we're kind of like, actually, so.
Okay.
So, but on my end, it's just, I'll do everything like what Lamar has, he got a backup. So let's say if his hard drive died, I can just put a new hard drive in and all this data is right there.
So we got Steve saying for the cam, one's three hundred and one's.
Officers.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, right now.
This is, yeah, that's, that's what he's talking about.
Oh, this, this I'm talking about.
This is.
Oh, I did, I did give you guys, sorry.
Well, I mean, we can, we can handle it and look at everything and. Yeah, leave that with us.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I did have a. And I don't.
Is there any termination fee?
Termination fee.
Is there any other charge?
Oh, no, that's, there's some hidden, yes. That's totally, that's what I said, it's really rolling with Lamar and he paid me under that, that long, so. It just, for me, is like adding up the offices. You see the needs here? So I'm kind of like covering the needs.
If it's just regular, you know, not be.
Table, we would be.
Yeah, so that's just another thing.
I will.
Being close to our, our fiscal year too, so I would, I can do something to look at going forward. As a.
I'll take what I might, multiple table is still. We'll take less for may, late, and we'll look at financial situation and.
For our fiscal year twenty-four.
And if you guys want, you can just, probably you can do Chad later on, but mainly it's the office right here. And just add another three hundred. Yeah, you guys be covering the main corner.
Yeah, well, we'll look at financial situation and then we'll, may, we might have to see if we can do it this fiscal year or the last, like, or next fiscal year.
So another thing, the goals here, it kind of like needs a lot, you know, components. So I got a laptop here for, for Tasha. It's a Dell Vostro. It's a fifteen inch laptop. And that's what I said, this one has all what she needs. It's kind of like nine nine nine, a hundred ninety-nine. And it's covered, anything goes wrong, we, Dell or me replace, like what Chad happens here, he bought a new computer, the screen went out in the next three days, that's been replaced. So that's what Tasha recommend, asked me to kind of show it. It will be, uh. But, uh, it has a twenty-four, uh, twenty-four inch, probably I'll bring it to next, the timing base to the meaning.
Okay.
Uh, twenty-four inch, it's about a hundred fifty dollars for monitor, big guy. And then Amanda, she just need a new desktop. It's with Dell too. It's kind of like, it should be like fifteen hundred, but I'm a direct supplier with Dell, so it's about nine ninety-nine as well. It's like the cat, the beetle man, they get it directly from Dell. Yeah, so that's mainly their computer. And because what Tasha wants, she got two monitors, right? And she can take the laptop with her, it's like a docking station, it's like a docking station, so that she can plug in like that, you know, for office. And then she can take the laptop with her at home. So, yeah, so, so I think Amanda, she wants one monitor. I think Tasha suggested you have two monitors for them. So the monitor's like one fifty each. So it's about, yeah. But, but as I said, this is just an option.
Can I speak on this?
Yeah.
Part of the problem is on these systems is that Microsoft seven is placed on these computers and there is no backup support system for Microsoft seven anymore at all. So in order for Amanda, a lot of, I don't know how old these computers are, they still have to, they just drive them and sometimes to help the customers that come in and not just that, but the side of where I'm doing is they're slowing way down. They've had a lot of computer issues. And it's not just these computers. I'm not sure I'm not an IT person, except for to use them, but I don't know anything about backups or anything like that actually. It, it worries me. On the accounting side, you don't want to lose that.
It's impressive that Microsoft seven is still firing up in two thousand twenty-three. That is Lamar.
I'm surprised he is.
Honestly, like that's, that looks like mid-two thousand.
I have a hard time about, hey, Ma'am.
Sure. How long would it be?
To get it?
Yes.
Oh, next three business days.
It's great.
I think it will be, if I place the order right now, so I'll, I'll pay first, if you guys pay later on, I'll, I think by, I think by Friday, it will be here.
Well, I know I've been in here when Amanda's kind of crashed and she had issues and I know, you know, I don't know the complete total of all that, but I'm going to make it on you, but that's important. And it's, that's the bulk of the business.
So for monitors each is about one fifty. I think they, they want two, right? Two of each for you? Twenty-four inch is good. And then, yeah, there's a need for a docking station for her so that I think she wants to work from home sometimes, so she can unplug and plug in, right?
Just for like meetings, so I can record meetings or step away because when the public steps in, they can see the black computers directly and sometimes on meetings with the headphones, it's not necessarily something that needs to see.
So this for Amanda, the desktop. And this for Tasha, the laptop. So if I please order tonight, I think, so just check with me, with Dell, I think they're from, they're, uh, fuck, we're in DMC, I think, I think at least by Friday.
Okay, we got to.
You're gonna have to find, I can find one. That's something that's.
Because as a, Kevin, Kevin also bought one for me so far.
I can give a good testimonial, he's, man. Without him, we couldn't have the graphics and stuff on here that we do with our live streams and, we got the Dell really quick, like you had to load my stuff on it, but yeah, it came in just three days, so.
Please order tonight for this.
You said you had.
The data.
For me and the end.
For me and the end.
I see.
Thank you, Abraham.
All right, I'll leave the guys.
All right.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Do you know anything about Linux, Linux operating systems?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, Linux is, into the board, Linux is more of a business oriented operating system and Microsoft is getting very expensive on their individual things. So I just wondered if you knew anything about Linux. It might be something the board wants to look into in the future.
Because they use accounting software and it's run by Windows.
Linux does not use any Windows. They have every program that, that Microsoft has, Linux has professional versions of.
Well, I mean, there's really a software they're using for accounting software and it's called, it's created by Southern software. And it's already, they have a license, they already have a contract with them to use, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
In that case, okay, they got.
Yeah. It's hard for them to switch in the contract.
I appreciate it, Abraham.
Thanks, pleasure.
Next up is to the bank account. To review.
I'm going to make the motion that we add Tasha to all the bank accounts to review so that she can have access to everything as the front end or the retro. And then we have to call United Community and sign over stuff and all that, just to access.
All right, I'll follow further. Next up, Jamie wanted to add something about the power poles.
Um, we've had an individual that is willing to pay for the paint. It takes a special paint to go over these power poles, at least later night, so that we could repaint them back to their pretty much original. So that we could repaint them back to their pretty much original color. And I just feel like that we need to put it in the newspaper to have people to send in their bids to complete the job. For Taylor Robbinsville, you know.
That's something I'm hoping we could do.
If, if he was staffed, I know he thinks so, but you know, I don't know that, it, it is a possibility. Because if the individuals are buying the paint, we want to do a painted brush, you know?
You can do it by email, you're not looking at. There's several categories, let's just take the low, it's 90 pounds, which is, and it's not, you don't have to advertise, you could email all the painters, you know, that you're emailing the same thing. You just have to show, that email, a good thing that, you know, that more than one painter can take. I think it all has to be the same.
I don't really know all their names, so can we just advertise it in the paper?
We do, yeah.
I don't have a clue of who to email, you know, I don't know the painters. Yeah, I made the motion to.
Mayor Adams, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Number one, I, I asked if I could get the letter, is that okay? Did I get the letter for the, for the way finding? Okay, I just wanted to clear that, because, and then the other thing was, Mr. Wheeler had to wait for someone to come to his shop, so, come back from lunch, so he could come down here. Could you all just tell him the status of the down home? Or do you want me to? It doesn't matter, I, that, that's what I was going to ask. Before, I was going to ask if you wanted me to fill them in.
Price, the short version, or will I open it, take and sell bids?
Starting this term.
The minimum bid will be 20,000, and we're going to raise the bids.
June Boardman.
And the June Boardman will.
Not the names, just the June.
Yeah, we'll, we'll raise the sale bids and.
Okay.
So everybody have to start describing. Uh, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, you just have to submit a new bid, and, and June will, we'll stop the, stop accepting the bids and.
Before, the day before our meeting.
Okay. Alright, great, thank you. Just, just for clarification, he submitted a, a purchase proposal, does he need to change that?
He needs to.
Yeah.
He submitted an offer of purchase.
Yeah, offer of purchase, right.
We're not doing offer of purchase, it's a bid.
Okay, okay. Is there a special form, anything you need for that? Just, just, just a proposed price?
In a, you know, in a closed stand, like.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to, thank you, thank you, Sharon.
Alright, alright, thank you. Proposition.
Thank you all. Give meaning.
I see.
Thanks, Bruce.